Mayor of the College, please watch over the town council. Let us work together to improve and take care of the community and surrounding areas. Heavenly Father, please watch over the county employees as they go about their day and day out of business, the police department, and the residents of Maryville, Louisiana. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray that we unite in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right there, Dan, he had ours at the Denver, and then he had ours at Denver. Okay, I have a couple changes here. Under number four, I need to warn, at North Third Street and South Third Street. On item number one, Ms. Colleen Strenger, we're gonna move her next month on a monthly meeting. And that's all I have anymore. I have a motion for that. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a proposal of Dennis that presented for the regular meeting in July ninth, two thousand eighteen. Have a motion. Second, do you approve of financial statements comparing actual versus budget for July two thousand eighteen? Have a motion for that.
Motion.
Oh, okay, thank you. Under Mayor's comments, I put a few schedules a little where for a flip off schedule which is coming up. Homecoming will be September the twenty eighth. September the twenty eighth, Mayor, we'll have to homecoming. Our food box, if that's what you would like to call it, is up now by the police station. It does have mighties in it, they're assigned there from Methodist Church, and you can stop by there to see that. If you would like to also, if you seek fit to add to it, just to Mr. Mr. Mitchell's ride, or just go ahead and put it in the box, or you can bring it here to the town hall, and I'll see to it that it's just put over there in the box. Okay, that's all I got on that. Old business, Maryville Police Box, the procedure manual, pages three fifty-five through four fifteen. Any discussion on that? Are they entertaining motion to accept it?
I'm making a motion.
I'll favor. All right, we have second to that.
She was second.
Okay. All right. Discussion of argument number twenty-two, item jump. I will leave this one up to the board for discussion.
I don't think it's what he did. When I seen it covered everything, I just think we need to go start enforcing it.
Well.
How, how are we gonna enforce it?
Well, doesn't it have where you can require to clean up, and you can't have junk cars, you can't have washers and dryers, all of these things laying around? I know it takes paperwork, you have to... You have to send a letter now? Is it so long?
I have ten days from the day of the mail. It's hard for that to do with the police office.
Well, that, that's way for German stuff now. Probably sort of about a mail. But either way, it'll work. But I don't think we've got to the core of this. We're gonna send these people a letter, or who's gonna see who it that they took? You know, are you gonna implement the plan or what?
Or is that what's in that?
There's no price in there for that. There's no, no cost in there. There's, you gonna hire contractors to go clean up the yard all the way? That has been done before here in town. You gonna clean up their place, borrow, put a lane on their place? I mean, how you, how you gonna handle this?
I feel after we send them a letter, that, that should be a little less of a pain for them. You know, giving them heads up, this is the ordinance that state such and such. And, you know, you have X amount of days to get it cleaned, and if not, then you will be fined, and we come up with whatever fine.
That's more or less what you, what you want to do.
So, we did like...
Put an amount on it.
Amount on it, make it one certain amount. The thing about it is you're gonna have to do it personally. You know, if we give them a fine, we're doing this my little. So, we'll make it, you know, say you have so many more days, can you get another fine?
I feel like we shouldn't set it where we're below. I think that, I don't think it should be just twenty-five or thirty dollars. People said, well, we'll just, you know.
Thank you for the opinion, right?
Yeah, so we have to come up with a price that is gonna say, hey.
Can I ask a question on that, if you don't mind? Okay, so, once the contractor come in, comes in, they remove the vehicles, they remove the scrap metal and everything, where's that contractor gonna take it to? Because if they send it to a scrapyard and they sell those items, then where does that money go? Does it go to the town as part of the...
Payment for...
Payment for cleanup, or does it go back to the person?
No, if they have not paid their fine or anything like that, then the town has to go.
Because...
It goes back to the town.
Depending on how much stuff is out there, it could bring in thousands of dollars, and if you only impose like a two fifty charge, you take the two fifty off of that, then you're looking at...
I think the best way about going about that, go ahead, do what she said. Pay the contractor the money that come out of that, and then give the rest back to the individual. Because if you don't, you open your foot up for a big can of worms.
Well, it says here in, in G, the actual cost of the work of removing the junk from premises, whether performed by town forces or by contract, shall be charged to the owner of the premises. Which charges shall be due and payable upon the completion of said work and shall bear interest at the judicial rate from said date. So...
I agree with that. I think it should be, you send them a letter of warning, and then it's up to the owner. Property cleaned up, and like it says, if it's the town that does it, or somebody that you contract out, they should still have to pay that part of it, because it's their property. They're gonna have to clean it up and card it.
And probably should be signed for, that way they know they, that they've received.
So, if the officer delivers it, you would have to deliver it to that person.
But they have to have it down.
With a... With a signature.
Yeah, well, that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
The final letter needs to be signed for, I think that could, if it is, well, it needs to be signed for. And if the person lives on a pound, then it needs to be certified.
Certified, yeah.
It's signed for.
Who is going to say what is junk and what is not?
If it's an ordinance, clearly states that if it's a broken down vehicle, any kind of a broken down appliances.
Wrecked, smelled, partially smelled, inoperative, abandoned, weathered on public ways, unused portion of an occupied lot, vacant lot, discarded. And it, it states under junk, major appliances, ranges, refrigerators, refrigerators, water heaters, machinery, metal, tin, lumber, building materials, and that's a specific list, so it includes everything.
And that will be included in the letter too.
Well, is it gonna be the police department's statements? As already by his statement? I mean, I mean, I mean, if you're gonna have anybody able, able, able to file a complaint.
No, a board needs to, needs to be the board that they rely on. You know, if someone calls complaining, then we will check it out. Just saying.
Are we gonna be...
Just saying here, you hold on a hand of you.
And you say the town is going, is going to clean it up, and if the other isn't, does, does the town have, have the authority to go on profit property, to clean it up?
Well, it's an ordinance, I mean, this is stated in our, stated in here, yeah.
This is something that's been in, it just needs to be enforced.
Well, Bernard, have you looked over this?
I would say that if I need to address the not exceed two hundred dollars, I don't think you'd be able to pull off something. If you're having to pay a subcontractor to come in and do it, it's gonna be less than two hundred. It's gonna equal more than two hundred dollars. But I mean, you see it in order all the time, it's a grass ordinance. They cut in, give a lien on the property, same difference.
Well, we really need that here too.
What we're just addressing is, I was like, yeah.
What about the government, the town authorities going, probably?
I think as long as you follow requirements of notice here.
It says, because I know, you know, we have trespassing laws, you know, you want to, you didn't get...
You can't build up things around your house and say you can't come onto the property. This is our property, it's all in the municipal.
So, as long as we sent tariff letters with the town laws, could help?
I would definitely co-certify, even though it says that the credit amount is sufficient.
Could we report that as a certified?
Do you, Tom, do you, do you agree with this? I mean, I don't care what you agree or not, but is this all equal? Down to there, where we're talking about putting in a pay clause and something like that?
Well, it says that it's up to the amount of two hundred dollars.
And I don't really think we need to go above that, because, I mean, two hundred dollars for a lot of people is a lot. I mean, you know, and they're, they're probably not gonna pay it anyway, so we need to...
Then we're gonna figure out what to do.
What to do next. We don't wanna make Jennifer's work, because that's what they're gonna be doing on the paperwork.
What about a phone call?
Yeah, you're calling us?
Yeah.
Well, you're not to talk on the phone, you're free.
Ask Mr. Robert, I hung up on one other day.
Oh, yeah. We spread it all.
Well, the way I see it, you don't have to take the customer from nobody.
I'm not that.
Sure, I can hang up.
I did.
If they can't try to talk to you, like a calm person, and they can calm down, so, look, I know, I do that all the time.
And how long should we give them to clean up the property?
Well, it says from the letter, then they say ten days. It says ten days, then receiving or whatever.
I don't think ten days is sufficient enough, because it's gonna take more than ten days.
Things like that, that's a lot to me.
I'm gonna say more than ten days.
Some of it's gonna, some of it's gonna have to be done on weekends by people, and so many people are gonna have to get help to do it, and stuff like that. And I don't think we're here to penalize anybody, we're just trying to get the town cleaned up.
No, and if they make an effort and say, look, I'm gonna be at work for two weeks, can you give me, you know, an extension? An extension, I think that's, I think that's good.
Now, here a while back, Buck Whiteley had that little station over here. And he would do that, as long as he was making signs of improvement, him and that stamps boy over there, they put two or three bricks on that sucker.
Yeah, and the same.
He was making improvements, so what you going to do?
But improvement has to be something that's noticeable, you know, a good bit of it, not, like you said, adding a couple of bricks or moving a couple of pieces of metal, you know.
Yeah, I'd say no more than thirty days. You know, thirty days, that's...
Thirty days is reasonable.
What are we, what are we saying, in the hospital?
Well, now, that's understandable, you know, they could, you know, look, I've been in the hospital, I've had surgery or whatever, can you give me an extension? I can understand that, but...
Yeah, well, could that fall under the appeal thing? You know, not make too much, you know, do it in a, I could do that in...
It would fall under that too. You know, that I need more time, or whatever.
What do you do if they don't sign for the letter? Because I have had that in the past, where we filled them out something, and they just didn't get back, and you don't sign.
Right, I don't know if you used to sign.
Yeah.
John?
And then we could send the...
Well, legally...
It says the last on address, but are you saying they just refuse to sign?
Yeah.
Oh, that, that's sufficient notice, because when it comes back, it states, it states law that they're... That was their, they're like either ducking, they were there, they had notice of it, refused to sign, that's sufficient.
So, refuse to sign is an indication that they are aware of.
That they, they have received.
And that way, the officer have delivered that thing, can put his name, address, site, date, and what time.
And what about renters, that, that, that has no responsibilities for the house?
Well, the owners, it's the owner's responsibility, yes.
And what if, right, the owner is the county's stakeholder?
You're telling you get the renters.
They can make the renters do...
It's still their responsibility, you can't have a house and just leave six days away and let it go.
It's still gonna be the owner.
Yeah.
Can I say that?
It's still gonna be the owner.
Yes.
I feel like y'all voted up good, yes, in terms of safety. What I'd like to say, this table again, and you write down things that's been talked about here, the safety, and Haley Brianman, and give them to Mr. Jennifer, and so we can compose all this together for our next meeting. If they don't wanna miss out on anything, or can get all, you know, put together correctly, and then we'll have to introduce and make a motion on, then we'll have to have an open meeting on, then we'll have to have another meeting on to finalize it for an ordinance. So, if y'all agree that, that's what I'd like to see done.
A lot of that can, can legal take it, and before the next meeting, can you go over?
This is current, this is the current. So, I, I don't think you'd want to, so if the restriction that you're intending, and change that you're going to make, so if you want to be in thirty days moving, if it's already set at ten, then you're only making the burden harder on yourselves. So, follow, if this is in place, and it's just the fact that we're not enforcing, we can just enforce one. But then you can leave a discretion here as if someone's in the hospital, or you're gonna use a reasonable means to follow through that and not be terrible people and go and take someone's.
So, kind of like, let's say, we send them a letter, should we fill another, if that's in the next council meeting, is what they say?
Yeah, I think we have to give them three days notice the next council meeting for us all.
So, yeah, but that would be more than ten days away.
Right, that would be the appeal period, you would have to appeal within ten days, or could appeal within ten days. If you wanted to grant more time, you could do that. Then it's gonna be a situational basis.
Like, if we leave it ten days, that's in the letter, so...
Right, so if you leave it at ten days, then you can allow the ten days, or if it's a special circumstance, you go out thirty days. Say the next, if you wanna change other nears to where they, they had to show calls, why it should not be
So, the field will allow four days?
Right, you could allow for more days. In that letter, make sure you set out, you have the right to appeal within ten days, and at that time, you'd be present at the next hearing, please contact their office for more information.
And their extension would also come at the appeal time, right? If they're asking for an extension, we can do that, but the, since it says appeal, that, that's an appeal, right?
Then ten days, I think, to lodge the appeal, so that would be, appeal would be at the next town meeting.
Upon notification to the town.
But it's stemming from a specific fee now?
Well, it says the cost, actual costing curve, giving it up to an amount of two hundred dollars. So, the cost...
So, that would be the fee?
Right, that would be the fee.
That would be the fee instead. So, say if it's just a refrigerator, the town employees, so we have to get it all the way?
If you need the town that does it, you could figure out about how long it took them to work.
How long it took, how many employees, and just calculate it like that.
Again, like using the refrigerator, if we pick it up, they'll still extract, do it each one.
Well, it says that the container would be become property of the...
Town.
Yeah.
Town needs it. They have been given the chance to haul it all themselves. So, if we have to do it, and it should be the town's people's money, if they have it to move themselves within a certain amount of days.
Right.
That's what I'm reading.
That's what it says, okay.
But yes, that also would have to, whatever anything that y'all like.
Just, do you see anything, do you think, like, did it be beefed up, or something that it said in there that, then? Because this probably doesn't apply.
Okay, you see, this is what it says here. And it says the actual, okay, it goes through Ben and Harper and Frye's, written note shall be served, not a...
Which section?
Sorry, F. In the event the junk is not removed within ten days after notice, is given in accordance with, in subsection E of this section, the mayor is duly authorized, and there's a two box, two and a half hundred dollars for calls to remove junk from premises. And G, it says the actual cost of the work of moving the junk from the premises, whether performed by the town forces or by contract, shall be charged to the owner of the premises. Which charges shall be due and payable upon the completion said work, and shall be interest at the judicial rate from said date. Does that still, that still mean if they don't remove it within the ten days, and then the town has to go, the town still get the money? If they sell it for junk? I'm thinking that something needs to be put in there that says that, just to cover that side of it. Just by reading it, to me, it doesn't sound like that's what it says. Unless I'm just reading wrong. Because if we're charging our owner, I just don't want it to be double dipped in junk.
Well, what's gonna happen if they don't pay? What's gonna happen if you go get it, and you do all of those things?
Follow, follow in the words there.
Yeah, follow in.
Shouldn't say that in here?
It does.
Yeah, that, that's... In the last page, and where else can I set it off? Could we add anything about grass over on trees, or things like that? I'm just thinking...
We got one.
Did you put all the orders, you know, the website?
Yeah, you can go online, our orders are online, you can go online and go on.
Yeah.
Did you understand what I was saying, that, that we're trying to complain?
I'm reading right now.
Well, now, if you take and sell a bunch of stuff like that there, and say it took you a hundred dollars to clean it up, and you get two hundred from the, the stuff you sell, I feel that you should just take your hundred dollars for your time, and then the money should go back to the people that, you know, because it was their stuff to start with. But they did abandon it by not cleaning it up to start with.
Yeah, you're talking about seizing properties, and you better be careful with that.
And then you're having lawsuits.
That's why you want it...
Of course, when you did all this, pictures have to be taken, you have to document it, the time, date, who does what, you know? All, all that needs to be documented.
Well, and I would be okay, like we say, if we haul, if the town employees go haul off the car, whatever, and they need it five hundred dollars for, and they figure the fees, and it costs two hundred, and take... Because let's be honest, a lot of them aren't, if they're not gonna haul it off or do anything about it, they're probably don't have the money for the fee. Just take out what it costs, and they're free and clear, the property's clean, and the town's still making a profit off of it. And not that we're, that's what we're trying to do, that's not the point. Because some people just can't, if they have the vehicle or whatever, they can't. They don't have the ability to haul it off.
Well, before that, Kate Walker, he came in town, the one that was managing, and he picked them up, but this is a, still something, it's not getting the hardest to be put in the order.
Well, we need to be putting the order, so be, y'all are wanting to expand beyond you. So, twenty-two point three is for removal of baggage, that's a record, and off when you start junk vehicles. Doesn't it address twenty-two point one, point four junk, or twenty-two point one, four junk? Which is major appliances, such as ranges, refrigerators, water heaters, machinery. So, maybe wanna have a clause in here that is, that's gonna be the same as defining them. Any vehicles remaining on public ways or private property, if they're just given, in accordance with this section, shall be considered as public property, and same may be disclosed as though by the town as a man of property. You have a clause in there similar to that for junk, and not only an awkward vehicle.
Robert, I didn't know we had that much. Yeah, look, that's what I'm saying, you know, maybe I have enough left over, give to them.
I mean, I'm sticking on the law system side, you know, and making sure you follow the law to what's said. We don't want losses of this, we don't wanna have to do that. That's the way I'm thinking about it. That's why I think it needs to be specific, in the way it states it, it being. That's why I should all be doing this, and just pride, and say that ain't whatever.
So, I mean, it's not something we're gonna be able to decide at the time. It's, it's gonna take a little while.
I'd like to present a motion to table this, and to all of you, that your good ideas that you have, and give us twelve more time to review again, and then bring your ideas to Mr. Jennifer, write them down, bring them to her, and then I'll have a list of the three of y'all for the next meeting. That's what, that's what I'd like to do, y'all wanna change that, you ready to do that? I mean, however you wanna do it? That be all right? Okay, so we'll, we'll table this for our next meeting, and we'll go to...
I'll make a motion to the table, that's there.
Okay. All right, thank you, Reverend. Okay, under new business now, police personnel, we have Steve Bump here, he might want to speak about the charges of reservists.
On your paper, there's Colleen Strenger, we've been trying all day to get in touch with her, her mother's been trying to get in touch with her. So, we're gonna post by my hers, we have a next council meeting for the full-time position. And I got a reservist, every time we... And, uh, I got a reservist, every time we have our council meeting, he's offshore, he works two weeks on and two weeks off. He's already post-certified, done headings makers, he's a, was police officer down up in Calhoun, and I'd like to put him on our reservist, those football scenes taking the kickoff, and I don't have anybody kicking from to these ballgames.
Reverend. Ocean, that may accept, and prefer, and, and reserve all the favor. Thank you very much.
And, uh, I had to take Mr. Cody Moore off the reserve list, because I never could get him to come in, and I'm not gonna keep this posted, and him come work three or four hours a week, so I let him go.
And I'd like to say something about this, he has been here twice before that I know of, and I would like, I'd like to see this progress again.
That's, I was gonna put him down for no, retired off.
This is his, for him.
He's asking to be kicked off, or you letting him go?
I am letting him go, because he did not fulfill his, uh, duties to the police department, three or four hours versus twenty hours, that's not his twenty hours. He's paying five hours last month, and that's just to get on the computer and upgrade his, uh, post qualifications. No ride time, no nothing. That's not the first time this has happened.
I have a motion to remove, uh, Cody Moore. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all right, uh, my word, all favor, yes. Uh, pay rate for a senior here, that's Mistress Elizabeth Scott, none of you has ever met her, of course, she's doing an outstanding job. She works forty-four hours a week here, uh, her pay was nine hundred dollars an hour. I would propose to leave in her, get her one dollar increase per hour, give her her ten dollars per hour. I would like to make a motion without a discussion. Any discussion?
She works, John does three days a week?
Yeah, I think she's got a different, that she has to split.
Oh, yeah, she's. She's got three and a half pages of people she checks every, uh, every week. And once you can't get in touch with it, she tries to call, and if you can't get in touch with them by phone, try to catch them next week.
Rock your plates with her?
Well, please, and everybody else I've talked to, all the senior people, they thank the Lord. And she's a regular, and it's like work, they got in my house. As a matter of fact, she gave up a job so she could stay down here with the senior people.
I make questions.
All right, Reverend, thank you. All right, uh, under our letter, under. I would like to, uh, move this forward, this, uh, plant for water, uh, water line here in town. Oh, this is the road here, oh, God, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, this is here for our street payment, uh, we have, you know, we've paved two streets already, and there's a more repaid. Uh, one was O'Brien Street, and one was North Railroad. And where this works there, uh, after this is approved, thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, we, the town, uh, pays this amount, and then the town will be a person for the state. So I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to put this in for the streets.
Motion?
All favor? Very much. Now, under a resolution to the Bullard County Police Bureau requesting assistance, we're ready to call in, rather, tram road, Carroll Street, Alfred Road, Division Street, Henry Street, Marco Street, Road to Sore Plant, and North, and South Third Street. Any discussion on that? If not, entertain a motion to accept this?
Motion?
All favor? Okay? All right, this is, uh, Maryville Community Health Center is celebrating the National Health Center Week. Our planning up here, uh, in Maryville on Walker Street, this is running for today, but this, they said here was twelve, that was Sunday, really.
Eighteen.
There's special tours, events, activities, listed on website, at www.ICCHC.org. If you, uh, want to get this, it'll be up here after a meeting, or you can call, and we said we welcome your business, visits, and arrange for your personal tour. I, I think it's a very helpful thing for our community to have this, uh, Community Health Center here in town, and, uh, it's being utilized a good bit, and, uh, so we're just celebrating the, uh, Community Health Center, the National Center Week. Okay, uh, thank you for this part of the nation. All favor? Okay, now we're down to the public participation.
Before we get there, David, just for the general public, uh, contractors are just about through with the completion on, uh, Super Street, where we have the washout, and the bridge on Division Street, and this, uh, within this last week on, uh, what's that, Frank's, David? Uh, we took out, or had a contractor come in, they got a lot of major swamps and everything like that, so, you know, we're, we're getting there. Thanks, David, everybody working, so.
Okay, public participation. Reverend?
I, uh, I would appreciate, and I think a lot of other people too, if we could get the cell phone numbers of all the council men and women, get them posted, or get them, because Mr. Thompson, he wrote a card from me yesterday morning at five thirty, and I had no water.
Oh, no, not me. I had shared.
I would have called you to find out why I didn't have it, but I would like, I, I personally would like to have town cell numbers, so I can, you know, you know, I have to, maybe in general.
That, that's, that's an issue that has happened before, and we have addressed it before, it's, uh, central relay, and what, and what caused all this. I know they would have it over their cell phone here, between the back, uh, just in front of that, uh, it was correct, it was, but it was nothing that was done for, for, uh, not being attentive about the town's work.
But I would just like something that.
You can have that, that's no problem. You can call Mr. Jennifer, and I'll tell you what you say, or you can call, and I'll tell you what you say.
I have one of them.
Just whatever you like.
I'm getting our change, one hundred.
When Maggie was working on the street, was there a, was that a problem in the water, because I had, or, you know, I had water?
Yesterday, I had water.
See, see, I just wanted to get a hand, and the water didn't meet it.
No.
No.
What do you, what do you, does it get water on the street?
Work around their, their own, so. That's why they can't, they're busy. So it was a mess, that was. They did work in my area.
Where does that come from, anytime that people work on a lot, or anything like that, it stirs everything up, could be a little bit of wax.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and say that right here, uh, in Sunday's paper, uh, two Sundays ago, the government has allocated for state with, you know, four billion dollars. I've already contacted Mark McCarthy, the Irish Associate Engineer, I've called August Hill, I've called John Smith, and everybody's ready to do that, uh, we have water lines here, that's concrete, that's, that's, those are strills, them, uh, PVC pipe, concrete pipe, gallows, uh, that, like, years ago, it was just a promeration of stuff that was put together. That, if we ever can get this far, and get some help from, to do this, uh, which I talked to, uh, Mr. Vernon Myers in LMA, Lake Charles, we pull that, uh, he's aware of our situation, he's done a lot of good things for the town, uh, and they can help us as far as, uh, obtain some of this four billion dollars to get this worked up. And it, it's for towns, the population's ten thousand and hundred, so we do qualify for it. But we need help from our higher officials, uh, you know, and that helps to contact your representatives, your senators, let them know that, uh, we would appreciate their help in, in, uh, obtaining money to improve our water line here in town. Any other further just invitation, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, thanks, Reverend, thank you very much.